Looking in one I can tell. I got this sort of, obviously I'm not in there. What do I do if I'm a tiny owner? They bomb, you know, and busy job tomorrow. Really? You told me the day before? There are other things they say.
Let's, whatever you're ready to go, but you know. All right, council ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting of the village of Walton Hills, Tuesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-two at seven P. M. Okay. Angela had a event with her children, so she's not here. She has to be excused. So I will do roll call. Jennifer Allen.
Here.
Mary Brenner Miller.
Here.
Fred Nielsen.
Here.
Raymond Whedon.
Present.
Brian Spitznagle.
Here.
All of council present. Along with our loss, Sir John Montello and myself. Okay. Any comments related to the agenda items? And we'll take comments as we move along to the agenda items, too, just in case someone had any comments before we started. Like to welcome any of the residents or anybody else that's watching our meeting from the live stream. Okay, then we'll just move right on to the legislation. Item A is Resolution twenty twenty-two dash seven, Walton Hills Lake Club Agreement. We put it out for first reading in our last month in our council meeting. Any comments on that? I know the Recreation Committee, I don't know if you wanted to comment on that. Brian?
Sure.
Okay.
Mayor, thank you. We had a Recreation Committee last, committee meeting last Tuesday, that was the third. And one of the items on the agenda was to discuss with the lake, their costs for the year and with our, our recreational budget, we're trying to get some, a basketball court, plus we do, redo the tennis court or at least mark them, mark the pickleball courts. And of course, that costs money and we wanted to have a conversation with the Lake Club. Of course, his contract is twenty thousand dollars and we want to have, have a conversation with them if they could take less than twenty thousand dollars still, and still operate for the summer or for the, for the season. And they respectfully declined to take less than twenty thousand dollars for the contract. They stated that they had some things coming up that they wanted to budget for, slides and things like that. So that's where we are with the Lake Club as it stands. And Ms. McCormick, the president of the Lake Club, she is going to speak to whoever she needs to speak with about getting that time change from one thirty to three thirty, I think.
For the parkers.
To one to three, even back a half an hour. She says she thought it would be pretty much all right to do, but there were some minor details that she had to take through and she'd be back in touch with us. So that's, that's all I have on that.
Just to comment, I did talk to Sean yesterday. She says she'd be watching the meeting if there was any comments or anything she needed to be, she needed to comment on. So we did, we did talk about that. We did talk about when we get the lead for the park, they'll get together, you know, and talk about the parkers and them unloading, unloading, what times, just to kind of have the, the lead counselors work everything out. And if there's any issues, they'll, they can talk about and resolve that. So they'll probably have that meeting. We're still interviewing for a couple more lead counselors. We did hire one lead counselor. So those conversations with the Lake Club will take place. So we'll have it on the next council meeting on Tuesday, either, either for suspension, second reading, what, what, whatever council desires at that time, but I'm definitely gonna, we'll definitely have it on the, on the agenda. Does anybody else want to make any comments related to the Lake Club contract?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think as long as we get the clarification on that time change with it, that by, per the contract, we are supposed to pay them by June first. So I would think that we would need to pass it as an emergency next week.
Unless you want to have another meeting. I'm just saying, I, I have no problem with that. I mean, it's up to you.
Yeah, then please, if everybody could talk into the microphones because they can't pick us up otherwise.
Okay, so we gotta be real loud.
Well, for the, Jennifer, just for clarification, for the contract June first, we don't have a contract right now.
That's okay, yeah, okay. That is, that is correct. That is correct.
And in our, my, my, her conversations, she'd say you guys had good dialogue and stuff and understands, you know, however, if there needs to be more dialogue or whether you're not going to pass it, you know, they, they know that the villages would, you know, wants to enter into the contract. And so it's. We are going to have a C O W. Meeting before the next council meeting. As you received the email from Angela, so we're going to go over the budget in that meeting and stuff, too. So that will give us opportunity if you want to have more discussion, too, next Tuesday. Okay. We want to, we can always come back to it for now. Any comments from any residents relating to the twenty twenty-two Lake Club contract with the village of Walton Hills? Okay, any comments from?
Just about the volume and apparently when we talk into the microphones, it's much easier for them to hear it at home.
Okay, good. We'll make note of that. Okay, we have item B, which is Resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven, which is the, well, we have, it's Kimball Recycling disposal. I'm going to, I have Rob here, our zoning inspector, service director, to talk about it. He participated in it, attended the meetings, gave us that letter, he sent me a letter of recommendation that I forwarded on to, to you. Me and Rob have had several conversations related to this topic. Plus you have all the bid documents and everything, too. I made a hard copy for you. Plus his letter is in your mailbox, plus you got it electronically. But I wanted Rob to be here because there's, there was a lot of dialogue, as you know, the last couple of years. With, especially with the pandemic, there's been some struggles with picking up our trash. And the consortium was, was concerned about that, but they did have quite a few bid on it and they, they decided to, the recommendation is to give the contract back to Kimball, but there's a lot of reasons for that. So I want to let Rob talk about it and he can answer probably all our questions. And probably you could take the mic down by you or you can stand by the podium, whatever way you're comfortable with. Because when you sit, you're probably taller than most of us anyway, so.
No, I guess I, I, you know, the biggest reason was, you know, Rumkey, like in my letter, they showed us the apparent low. What concerned the service directors unanimously was the exceptions that were set forth. So I copied you all on the, on the exceptions and I mean, it even goes down to the last exception that they listed was even their interns. So I mean, we put the bid documents together, you know, how the proposals, there, there was just, in our opinion, there was too many exceptions, including, it's not just our village, it was, it's each municipality in the consortium. I mean, appliances containing refrigerant or freon, they, they exclude. If you need to get evacuated, you're paying a hundred, a hundred fifty dollars per appliance. So I mean, what do, you know, as, as a service director, what are we going to say as a community?
Right.
Well, it's your fridge, you need to take care of it. Are no residents in the consortium want to hear that, so.
There's quite a few. We can go through a few of them, Rob. Drywall, concrete.
Drywall, I mean, I know everyone pulls a permit when they're doing work inside their house. But if there's drywall, that ends up in the garbage can, you're saying.
They won't take it.
Drywall, concrete, empty containers, drums, tanks understand, five gallon pails. Fluorescent light bulbs. When we do our roundup, they don't accept them anymore. They say it's got to go to regular landfill. And here they're saying they don't, they don't accept. So TV's greater than thirty-two inches, they won't take. I mean, that's.
Well, there's even on here, rags.
Yeah.
I don't know who's, it might be the master of mine.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Rob, I just want to, you know, add on here tires. We still, they still pick up, Kimball still picks up one tire a week, don't they?
Kimball, Kimball still picks up tires. I, I encourage anyone that has a tire just to drop them off to us at the service department because we, we have a roundup every year. So we, even though we only pull the roundup once a year, at any time, anybody has tires, I always encourage them, just bring them up there. We hang on to them, we store them and then in October, you know, county comes out and they do a roundup. But yes, Kimball will still.
So I mean, that's, I know that was one of the big ones that people ask me about.
And the difference in the contract, even though Rumkey was the lower bid, it was a difference of, Rob has here eight thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty cents for the five-year base contract. So it isn't like they came in, you know, way lower or something. So they came in just a little bit lower, but with all those exceptions, you know. And when Rob and myself just had the conversation, our residents, including myself, I think we like the idea. We basically can put everything in our cans. And what we have found, just talking to Rob and I'll share it with council because you receive calls, too. It seems like a lot of the issues, since things have opened up a little bit and they've gotten some of their personnel issues, you know, drivers straightened out, we haven't been having the same problems that we've been having. Before the pandemic, actually, they were pretty good. It wasn't until we kind of got into that, we started with sorry, missing streets, missing houses and those type of things. And, and we're relating those to, to personnel issues. And also me talking to the other mayors, they, it wasn't just isolated to, to them. And Rob is a service director, talking to the service directors, they all had that and that's what they expressed, so. Kind of where we're at, but Rob, anything else, too, that you want to?
No, just, just in short, you know, these, these are based, as you see on the bid tab, these are based, if they, on everybody's. Over the course of five years, the price goes up. So it would be difficult to be restrictive in the service and this is what is the, you know, nail in the coffin. You're going to be restrictive in the service and at some point, and I'm just saying, at some point, this will be, have to be passed out as the years go on, no matter who you go with. So you would end up having residents say, wait a second. You're not giving us the same service and we're paying more money at some point. So I mean, that's, at least we, we're, we're able to stick with the same service. That's, I think that's the big thing.
Just so everybody knows and for residents that are here and residents that are listening, our consortium consists of the city of Bedford, Bedford Heights, Orange and Walton Hills. And we had, let's see, one, we had Rumkey, Kimball, Republic, Waste Man, which is waste management. So them did it. So we had four of the big rubbish re, uh, removal companies did it. So they were very happy with that. You guys have the bid documents, so. My recommendation as mayor is to go with Kimball. We would also keep our same containers. We would, Rumkey, they wouldn't keep, allow us to keep our containers. We'd have to purchase their containers, which is another cost, and change them all out also with the residents, which is something else we discussed. Overall, residents have been pretty happy with our containers and the size of them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I got ahold of this last week and I went, talked to some of my neighbors and that. And since we were having trouble there on North Meadow Park and Spanhurst and up and down, that they were missing, missing pickups and stuff here for the last, I, I want to say three, four months now, three months anyway. We've had zero problems. I haven't had, there's no one that's really had a complaint. And I talked to Lisa, who takes the calls, and she said that she has had no calls. So it's, to me, it looks like what the problems that they had, they've worked on it and straightened it out, so.
That's a bit of a big concern for us because all of us here, you know, when we get the call, you get the call on, on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, you know, it's different than if our, our trash removal was during the week. But you get on Friday and our residents, you know, it's, it's, it's not picked up. You know, we try to get somebody out there, but that's something Rob has really struggled with, you know, and, and our residents. We have our residents call, so there's a record of it, but you know, they, and all, some of you might have witnessed, that's, you know, oh, we'll be out and then they're not out. So that's been addressed in this, the four communities have addressed that with some of the response and, and being a little more responsive to our needs, too. So I, I do think they've done a great job. As you can see, they, gosh, they went through, really went through the contract well. Let me just see if the, the documents here. Anybody else? Any comments from council? Relating to that? Rob, anything else you want to?
No.
And as you see, Rob recommended it and along with, you said the, the whole consortium agrees.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to clarify, that's a five-year contract with two option years.
Correct.
Or seven years.
Correct. Five-year base contract, two options.
Mayor Proderet?
Yes.
Yeah, I have one question for Commissioner Cowman, as it relates to the five-year contract, which is a long time. In a general sense, as a consortium group come back together, year three, year four, to kind of take a look at, you know, where, you know, how things are going before we get closer to those option years. I mean, five years is a long time. Anything like that in the past?
Yeah, I mean, we see each other at the Christmas party.
What Christmas party?
Service Director Christmas.
Service Director.
I haven't attended, so you can't look at me, don't look at me.
Yes, I, I'd say about once a year, I, I've gotten, we've gotten together as a meeting. Been in this position five years, I've, I've gotten together with the consortium twice. And even outside of that, we'll talk back and forth or email back and forth. Hey, we're, we're all in it together. So like when we were having issues, I emailed out, like, anybody else have issues? And it popped up and then they were like, you know what, let's get together, let's have a meeting. So I, we talk, we email, we talk. But, but yes, I, I mean, just with the pricing, I mean, we, we may, there's a possibility we may, may not even think about exercising to Rock. Because of the times, because of what was happening with recycling and everything else, it was easier for us just to stand our ground because recycling at the time, when our first, we had to exercise our first option, was through the roof. And we, we just held out, we got a good price, just stick, stick your guns and we actually rolled those two years over. This contract, we may be going out for bidding. And we'll, we'll stay close and we'll talk instead of, instead in lieu of exercising.
I have one more question for you, Commissioner Cowman. On the optional bid, per dump, roll-off container for street sweepings, that, that sounds like something that's specifically for the municipality if we need a container for them. But then the per dump, the roll-off container, optional bid, per, uh, roll-off container for residential move-outs. Is that, if the village has to go in and clean out a house, or is that available to a resident? If a resident wants to say, hey, look, I need a dumpster?
That's optional for a resident.
For a resident. Okay.
How does that work exactly, Rob? Is that Merry Christmas, how's your rubbish, or how's your rubbish Merry Christmas?
Oh, the, I, I should clarify, the, whoever we choose to refuse, they're not the ones to.
Okay.
Rob, we do have legal counsel before you. I, I think, you know, Ray, to your question of the, the length of the contract, as much as there was concern recycling and it's so volatile, they also were looking for some numbers in case they want it to be long-term. They were kind of unsure the unknown going the other way, too. You know, as, as Rob mentioned, where they're almost going to stop recycling, you know, or charge them even double, so. I think consortium, isn't that the case, too? Rob, you, they were looking for some kind of long-term, just to kind of keep things under control, too. Any other questions related to that? Jennifer, any questions from any residents or non-residents that are streaming?
Not on the recycling. Or, or Kimball.
Okay, any residents? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And this, and this is relates to the actual, you know, the, the cost for our residents. And how, how do, how do we factor that in? Do we stay where we are per, until January or, you know, the new costs? Do they factor into twenty twenty-three?
Well, that was going to be our next discussion here. Whether we pass the increase onto our residents or do we, we absorb it? We've had some discussions with Angelo about that, what we can absorb. I like to see us absorb it this year, at least. I think we're, we're going in a good direction with our economic development and some things that are going to be, are taking place. I, I think our revenue has increased. Here, this body here has done a great job, along with the administration, to keep us in the black. So that, that is a discussion we need to have, but I think as of right now, you know, we will absorb the increase is what I'd like to see. I think, kind of what we talked a little bit about in the budget, I think council kind of feels the same way and revisited with our budget coming up, you know, for twenty twenty-three.
So we can have a better discussion next week when?
Yeah, we can talk about that at that time, too.
Okay.
But that's kind of where I, you know, and I, I think I've gotten that feel kind of from everybody here. We, we kind of knew there was going to be an increase, that we would see how we stand this year, absorb that increase and then, you know, discuss it in our. So we'll, we'll do that. We'll have that. That would be one of the discussions for Tuesday, too.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, Rob, you putting that in there, too, so kind of gives us a good idea. Have we been pretty consistent, Rob, with the tonnage and what the village? Or has it been, you know?
I mean, relatively. I mean, we've creeped up. I think the, the bid last time in fifteen was, everything was based on nine hundred and thirty tons. And we closed out, we closed out the year last year at nine hundred and ninety-three tons. So we've consistently creeped up over the five years.
We've got a little more construction and some of our houses being a little older, too, and stuff, a lot of remodeling going on and.
Yeah, we have a handful of new homes.
Yeah.
You know, like at last.
Any other questions for Mr. Cowman? Any questions for Mr. Cowman from the residents? Give it a couple of minutes because they got a little delay. See if anybody live streaming has any questions for Rob.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if we could go back for a moment on the Walton Hills Lake Club of evenings. Sean McCormick did reply saying, realizing the importance of the time change, one P. M. to three P. M. I am working on guard schedules this week. I will follow up with the mayor tomorrow. I expect that I will be able to make the new times work.
Great, thank you, Sean. They want, just so, for the residents, they wanted to change the time so the, the parkers get back to the park, give a little more time for their parents or guardians or whatever to pick them up. So they were all there and stuff, the closing of the day. Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask, Rob, do you, do you recollect what we're paying this year? For, for our garbage collection?
I, I don't have that information in front of us, in front of me.
Yeah, I don't think I have it either, Brian. We can get that for?
Tuesday. Yeah, I'd like to see.
The current contract?
Well, I'd like to see what that dollar value increase is per year and then for the portion of this year, so we have, have a good number to look at in terms of the budget.
Well, I'll just get it for Tuesday. I probably have it in the office in the, in the report fifty-two. And I usually grab my big pile, but I've kind of been limiting what I bring in here. You have, you have the report?
This was twelve fourteen, so I don't know if it changed.
I'll get the exact amount. I'll get exactly well, at where the year ended.
Well, and just, our contract years go from July thirty-one to July thirty-one, so.
So we'll be close, then? Any other questions? I'm going to wait, Brian, you see?
No, that's, that's okay. It's going to be an old number anyways.
I know it's going to be less.
Yeah, exactly. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed a comment from Karen Rimming in regards to the lake contract. She said, and I, as a senior, would like time at the lake. So I'm assuming she wants us to relay that to Sean McCormick and the Lake Club members.
Oh, garbage, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It was budgeted this year for a hundred and eighty thousand. Again, this is December twenty-one's budget, so we had a budget of a hundred and eighty-one thousand for the year.
Considerable increases.
I don't know. That's only budgeted. I don't know if that's what we're actually spending.
Right.
Because twenty twenty-one, actual, as of this, which I know has been revised, was a hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and eight thousand. So whether it's that much of an increase, I don't know.
No, we will discuss, be discussing. No, we will discuss, be discussing. I was going to talk about the increase until the certain three ladies came in and I thought we better not. Okay. I don't want to get anything thrown at me very good.
I think they should settle down over there a little bit.
No, that's not. Any other questions related to resolution 2022-11, the Kimball recycling disposal agreement contract we're looking to enter into for our trash removal? Okay, so I will for the next COW meeting and also for council, council meeting, we'll have that on there for legislation. Also, we'll talk about it within the budget on the difference in the increase and how we want to fund it. Next item is discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just said from somebody named Matthew, will the village post an update once the Chestnut Hula Hickory Road project is complete?
Yes, under other business, I'll kind of give a, well, you know, Rob's here, too. We can talk about it now. I know that the they opened the bids.
No, they don't.
Bids for the repaving, they're still being reviewed. I think they just opened them, what, yesterday, Rob, or the day before, something like that? This week, wasn't it, or Friday?
Yesterday.
Friday.
It was Friday.
Was it Friday? Like, so they they're just reviewing them. So that recommendation will probably be coming to council in June here. As far as the, Rob, and I'll let you comment a little bit. I talked to Joe, I met with Joe today a little bit. You want to you want to comment about the water line?
No, what did Joe update you on?
What's that?
I don't want to say anything incorrect about the water line. What did Joe update you on?
Joe said most of it's in place and then they're going to start working with the residents. Is that?
Yes.
With their connections and stuff. And he said it went well, it's gone well. We had how many, I think, what, four people bid on the?
On the resurfacing?
On the resurfacing. So we're happy about that. So we will, yeah, we'll let we'll let we'll give an update in the in the journal, too. That was the question. Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Also, back to the Kimball, Brian, you said it was like 145,000 in the budget so far?
No.
One six.
It was budgeted according to this and this this wasn't the final budget that was passed.
Right.
So I just had this for something else. It was 180,000 budgeted for this year, 180.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because just the quick numbers I did here with just averages and they're not accurate and I don't pretend them to be, but based on Rob saying 993 tons for last year, this is coming out to like just over 201, just in general. So we kind of have an idea of.
Right. I'll have a. Any other comments related to that? Rob, do you have any other further comments related to that or?
No.
Okay.
Any comments about anything else?
You know better than to open that door.
I'll just I'll just give quick comments before Rob leaves that comes to things developing up at the the former Ford plant that's moving along very well. So if anybody tells you things, it's going to be 10 years, it's going to be five years, it's going to be two years, it's not going to be any of those, it's going to be this year. We're so happy and I know council, I keep you updated. As we can update the residents, we will, but things are going good. You probably drive by and you probably see just this last couple of days, 10 to 15, 20 cars, they're working inside there, doing things and stuff. So it's all all very, very good, very, very exciting for our community and very exciting for the area. So I can't wait till we, as a group, can give a good update to everybody and stuff. We're just working with the developers and waiting for some grants. All good stuff, right, Mr. Kalman?
Absolutely.
It's all all good, good stuff and council. So in fact, with that said, we'll probably have an executive session maybe with Mr. Jordan to speak to some of the things and stuff. So I'll be glad when we get past that point and we just can do it right here in this open forum, so that's not too far off. I know the planning commission's going to be busy. We got some other businesses coming before the planning commission, so we'll be busy with that. Probably going to have a meeting. I'm going to talk to Rob tomorrow this month. We normally have even months, but we might end up having one of those next month due to the redevelopment of the of the former Ford plant. So there's just a lot, lot of good things going on. We're going to have a lot going on at the corners of our village, so, which is good because that's what we need is we need our revenue, we need payroll dollars, so. Yeah, that's what that's how that's that's our.
Right.
But so any other any other questions related to why Rob is here or anything related to anything else or? Well, then we'll move on to item five. Any other residents have anything?
Not so far.
Everybody good here? Thank you, Rob. You're more than welcome to stay on a 72 degree day and?
Get away with only one more item there, I think.
There you go. There will be a couple more, but I know we did talk to Mr. Jordan about his contract a little bit. I do have some numbers here. He's asking us to amend his contract. One of the reasons for the residents is he's, which is a good thing, putting in a lot more time than he expected. His contract through the current is 2,300 a month. Any hours in excess of $25 per month are billed at $75 an hour. He has he has to date has never billed us beyond his retainer fee. Okay, so I will say that. Jordan's very good at that. And as you know, he takes calls from all the businesses and involved in that, takes calls from all of us plus other contractors, too, and different things, works well with Rob and our team here and stuff. His new proposed changes is $200 more a month. He'd like to see an increase to $2,500 a month. And any hours in excess of the 24 hours per month would be billed at $100 more, 100 instead of 75. So that would be a $25 increase.
Better than 24 hours?
In excess of 25 hours.
25.
So that, everything's the same, $200 more on the retainer, his monthly bill, which is what he normally stays within. And then anything beyond that, the contract says $75. He's never actually used that, similar to Mr. Montello, mostly they stay within their thing. And even when they do go outside it, they've all been gracious enough to absorb it, but he would like to see an increase. He just feels that he will be utilized a lot more and we're happy about that. And I think all of you feel, you all have worked with Tom that, and especially with this, are the biggest project this village will ever see, we need his expertise. So I'm in favor of that amendment and increasing those amounts. And so we can talk about it again. There's no hurry. We were, he got a little bit from Angelo, why didn't you do it at budget time? And his reasoning was he was comfortable what we had, didn't think there was going to be this much more time added so quick. Development at the former Ford plant corner is moving a lot faster than anticipated and that's a very positive thing. So we're all very happy about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question online from Mr. Velp who said, is it true that we cut Tom Jordan a $50,000 check for the sale of the Ford plant?
No.
So I was trying to figure out. I kept reading it over and over. Wow. See, that's so bad.
We had a in his contract at that time, we did have a, I don't have it in front of me, if he were to bring in, I'm trying to think, it was $3 million?
I think it was a minimum of 2 million.
2 million or something.
In taxes.
In in actually net payroll tax, there was an incentive there for him to to be paid. And let me tell you, $2 million in net payroll tax to the village, we were very, we'd be very happy to pay him that. And that reason was he probably would have had an office here at that time when a different type of sale was going through with that property up there. And so that incentive was one of those things to put in there. But no, he's been receiving his $2,300 a month.
Mr. Mayor, that was prior to COVID hitting.
Oh, yeah, that was.
So that was a couple of years ago that we talked about. That was a while ago.
Oh, that was all talked about in this meeting, the contract was all talked about in a in an open meeting. We talked about his incentive and everything like that and agreed. So I'll have that on the COW meeting, too. Yes. And we don't need to pass it. I mean, we can have first reading or whatever, let's jump to legislation again. Yes, go ahead.
Mayor Collier, you mentioned perhaps we may have an executive session next week and inviting Mr. him to come here next week.
Yeah.
Is it possible to, you know, to invite him to just give a general update as much as he can to the general public that does not need to be discussed in the executive session before we go back so that our residents get a better sense of, you know, what's going on at Ford Corner and what and what he actually does for our village.
I'll even give you better. Come to the mayor's meeting on Thursday, he will be there again.
Okay.
And as we do at the morning meeting with the mayor on Thursday, I usually have every all the staff members here, as you know, Ray, including Mr. Jordan, and he gives a very good update. I know he gave a very good update at the economic development meeting, but to have him come at at a COW meeting beforehand, I'll talk to him. I don't think there's a problem, might just be a time thing, but can always talk a little bit before, you know, we go in. Yeah, I don't see a problem with it at all. If he's, you know, comfortable with, and I'm sure he will, because he's, Tom is very good at giving that big picture of what, just like he did in the economic development committee, how the redevelopment of that Ford plant up there, the former Ford plant just doesn't affect that property, affects all the properties in this area. So no problem at all, I'll talk to him. But I am having him at the Thursday meeting, so, you know, so he might repeat himself on on Tuesday what he says Thursday.
Which which Thursday would that be?
That's this week.
This week?
Yes.
Okay.
Normally it's on a Wednesday, but we had to push it back. The event center is being used for events during the day. So they kicked me out. So even the mayor don't have a problem. I had to move my day, so, which is fine, that's what's fine. We're glad they're using it, so. Any other questions? Any questions from council relating to the economic development contract?
No.
Okay. How about from residents?
No other questions, so, not so far.
Okay. Other other business? I I don't have a real lot. I I did pass out the Memorial Day item there. I know I talked to Mary, talked to me and I know Ray, you got you and Mary and I get maybe other council members were discussing the fireworks ordinance and stuff. So I did put in your mailbox the letter from the chief, just a short email, myself. I know we've talked about it in former council meetings and I said, talk to the chief and John. And I'm pretty much what we have is we have an email from, people have been talking, you know, since the state changed the the ruling on the fireworks. We as council actually talked a little bit about it in COW meeting. We have some residents talk to us about it. And at that time, I think pretty much the feelings of council was to stick with with our existing ordinance. And the chief is actually recommending that. John is looking into whether or not we have to pass something else. A lot of communities, even though they're staying with there, they still have to pass something else. So we can pass something to you if we wanted to, you know. And so I think that's what we're going to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Is that because otherwise we would fall under the statutory law of the state? So that's the reason for passing?
I'll let you comment on that. Yes. This is to, you know, take an affirmative step, saying that we, well, I don't know if you want them or you don't want them, to be quite honest. But if you don't want them, then we should take an affirmative step to, you know, clarify that, either by modifying our ordinance or reaffirming our current ordinance, so. Or you can vary it from it. You can allow it on certain days, you can do, you know, you can do whatever you want to do. So there's the consensus to ban them entirely. You might consider that's a good question. Right now in our ordinance, no persons shall discharge, ignite, or explode any fireworks. So that's in our rules right now on any given day. I mean, it's a little more to it, but that's the general gist of it, so.
Maybe to reach out to your constituents and ask them if they want it, if that's what they want. Unless you made up your mind already.
I'll have it on, I'll have it on the agenda for the COW meeting on Tuesday, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I can tell you right now that there's going to be people that are going to want to shoot off a few fireworks and especially 4th of July, May, and New Year's. We have them in our area, South Gallow Park, all down down the road and stuff. You hear them all the time. But how are we going to do that? I mean, are you going to go and and find them? You know, I mean, they are, they are residents of the village and if you hold true to the to the letter of this law, then you're putting our police in a situation where if they see somebody shooting off some firecrackers, now you're you're saying, okay, you know, we're going to find you. Just just putting that out there, too, you know. I mean, it's, I know that we all have a few neighbors that that like to shoot off a few fireworks or firecrackers, 4th of July or or New Year's. But just just a thought, you know, you're putting a little more pressure on our police to to tick it or, you know, to find somebody.
Well, I'll, you know, you have the letter, I'll give you, I'll give you my comment. I'm in agreement with the chief to keep our ordinance in place, whether or not we issue a new ordinance. So I'm in favor of keeping it in place. You can always review it next year or the following year. I think the problem is, just talking to the chief and stuff, is if you allow it and you get somebody who's abusing, what do you do? You have you have no way of, you know, protecting and? You have, you have no way of, of, you know, protecting the neighbors or someone else, or even the, the people discharging them. So I know some of our surrounding communities are putting days and times that people can do it, but I'm, I'm in favor of keeping our ordinance in place, which doesn't allow it. It's in support of the chief there. I don't know how council wants to look at it and stuff. Or you want to have more discussion, you want me to have the chief here, I can do that too. You know, sometimes doing it for one year, seeing how things go. I mean, they're already, Mr. Nielsen, I understand what, but they're already out there doing that, you know what I mean? It wouldn't change, we'd, we'd be operating the same way we have been in the past.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Colgar and Chairwoman, Mary Brenner Miller. You know, staying, you know, this, this statement from our police chief stating that after review of the State of Ohio law, the ordinance, no person shall discharge or explode any fireworks to stay and infect the village of Walton Hills. The only question I have is, you know, the ordinance that we have on the books was written at a time where fireworks were already not permitted statewide, there was no, and so this ordinance that we had, we were basically in support of what the state law was. But now that the state says you can have on certain days these fireworks, I'm, I'm just concerned whether or not this, we can actually do this, and this is where Mr. Montello's opinion comes in. If, if council and the, and the safety director slash mayor decides that we're going to opt out or ban, then we really have to have our language secure. If that is a desire, and I don't, not saying that is a desire, but if that is a desire, just to make sure we are on firm footing in order to do that.
And we got communities doing both. We have examples, some communities are ahead of us, some are where we're at. Some communities are even standing by their existing ones until their challenge. Some have totally banned them, you know, just rewrote their existing legislation, and some have amended it. So we'll have to talk, John will, we'll talk about it on Tuesday again.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Here's my thinking on this. I have no problem with keeping the current ordinance in place. It's not an issue. But whatever side of the fence you're on, this is going to become like prohibition. It's, it's legal, but you can't do it here. They're going to do it anyway. And you're either going to have 60 people in jail. I, I'm just, maybe I'm ahead of myself here, but I think people who like fireworks are going to do them whatever we legislate. And if they get fined, so be it. I'm not saying I'm advocating any of this, I'm just saying I know how people are. And I know some people like fireworks, and they're going to do it. And now that the state has approved it, it's going to continue. So we could be chasing our tails if we want to find them or whatever. But if we keep this in place and see what happens this year, if it's, if it's worse than it was in the years past, then maybe we have to take some other action. But I think it's like prohibition, sooner or later, you know, people drank anyway. You know, you didn't stop it, they just drank poison alcohol instead, but you're not going to stop it with legislation, I don't think. That's my take.
We need the legislation in place as we know, so our police can.
Right, I think we should keep what we have, that's what I'm saying, but I'm just saying.
We might have to keep it the same, but reissue it or whatever, that's something I want to determine.
That's all.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Spitznagel.
I think it's stated in the OML thing that we did receive that, that said it did give the municipalities the authority to go stronger. Point well taken, we have, if we do want to keep our ordinance or reaffirm it, the language should be very specific. There's a matter of what Mrs. Brenner Miller said, of practicality.
Right.
Right now, it's illegal, it's been illegal since forever. And you still have people shooting off the fireworks. And the, the problem is, and I do believe, I could be corrected, but I do believe that there has been passed, like maybe journals or something speaking to that. You know, 4th of July is coming up. Now, I could be wrong, but I seem to remember that there, you know, or at least the word, word should be out there that it is not currently legal in Walton Hills. But you're going to have people do it anyways, and we don't have the police force
The man corner.
to, 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 you know, run around and, and catch people doing it. I do know for a fact, for several years, if people were called upon, you know, that people, neighbors of mine would call the police because it's 1:30 in the morning and the fireworks are going off. By the time the police get there, the fireworks aren't going off. So they have to, you know, but I think keeping this in place does give teeth to our police officers. And, you know, the police can use their discretion too. Okay, stop, you know, if I come back here again, I'm going to ticket you because it's illegal. You know, they do have discretion, just like they do with driving, you know, speeding tickets and things like that. So, you know, as I sit here, if, if we, I don't know, if we, if we give that inch, you know, are, are we really doing anything by revising our ordinance in practicality? Rather than just keeping it the way it is, and if there's a problem that the police catch, they can say, look, it's illegal. And if I come back here again, or if it's, you know, a real abuse, they can find them right then and there, you know. You, you, if, if we start allowing, let's say you can do it till 10 o'clock at night, now you have to start saying what kind of fireworks you can do till 10 o'clock at night. Can you do, you, you okay?
Yeah. The chair just went down on her.
Fell all of a sudden. Now we have to define what kind of fireworks you can do, you know, exactly. They even allow consumer grade fireworks, what does that mean? You know, I'm sure it's defined somewhere, but I'll have to please help. Yeah, exactly. So now we get into a ball of wax about what, what's legal, what's not, and all that stuff. So I'm just thinking of the practicality of the, of the issue.
Hopefully people will obey the law, that's always, that's what you, so the lawyer.
Exactly.
You know, it doesn't mean you can't revisit it down the road. I mean, on the conservative side, and seeing how things play out are, are to our advantage too. Okay, well, I'll have it for discussion at the COW meeting on Tuesday. John will have, you know, we can get some draft legislation or something to look at and see or find out exactly what we need to do. John, as Ray and Brian and other council members have suggested, and go from there, make sure we got our ducks in a row.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we make sure in the legislation too then that the fine is specifically addressed? And fireworks?
We can tweak that or whatever too, we can look at that. I'll, we'll have the old legislation with us too.
I see firsthand what fireworks do. I'm not in favor of them. I have had neighbors in the past that have put on great big shows, and the police would well be able to find them. You know, so there are people that abuse the system, just because it happens, and people like to, doesn't mean it's always the right thing. Plus, I worry about the animals. So I had, you know, two dogs that used to hide underneath the coffee table, just trembling, so.
I have, that was the only other item, other businesses. Anybody else have any other items? Any other comments, any comments from residents related to that? Yes, Lee? Well, that's okay, we're, we're at the end, anything related to anything here?
Don't care about fireworks, don't want them, I'm with Jennifer, I don't like the dogs. Lee Nielsen, Tulip Lane. And I'm watching the water main replacement, and I, I think that the fellows are doing a pretty decent job. Although I'm not sure, they haven't been there this week, they just left everything. I don't understand their scheduling, but that's, that's the whole story. On a COW meeting, I brought my notes from that meeting, April 5th, we talked about planning. And we talked about what you committed to was to begin putting a planning effort on the agenda. And this is the first COW in May, and this was when it was going to happen. So I'm here to say, let's get it on the agenda. So it may not be today, but it, but sometime soon. Because again, I think you guys do a really great job on the day to day. But I think since our last plan is 20 years old, and the community has changed. By the way, it seems to me that we used to get some information annually about the demographics of the population. And I haven't seen that in the last few years. My sense is the population is changing in that it's getting younger, it's getting more colorful. We're getting babies, I mean, I heard babies crying on Tulip Lane, you know, I'm, when I moved to Tulip Lane, I was the youngest person 32 years ago, and now the oldest, which is okay. But our demographics have changed. And so the needs of the people of our community is different than it was 20 years ago. So I, I'm here to entreat that this body begin to think about putting together a planning activity. I'm concerned about things like not just the water mains, but the whole infrastructure, the streets. One of the interesting things that happened as they've been working on the water main, and, and of course, I'm not a construction person, so I don't really understand this, but they, they begin to, the trucks were so heavy, it began to bow the streets. So they've put now plates down so that they don't fall down into the streets, I guess. Good news is, it's going to be repaid sometime, right? But.
It's going to be repaid as soon as they're done. We're getting, we're getting, we're getting this right now, so.
And filling those holes that they made.
Yeah, they'll do.
Really fascinating to me because I've never seen that before, but there are now two big huge plates in front of my house where the trucks just kind of dipped the pavement. So that area is not all very stable, and I've sat in the COW meetings before and heard residents talk about other, other areas that are not particularly stable because there's water underneath. In my driveway, for example, I have, it's a concrete driveway, and it's been repaired now three times since 98. So because there's, there's water underneath, and it just keeps breaking down. So the infrastructure issues are important from my perspective, and I think about it in terms of attracting more residents because roads are important. Roads are important, people want to, people don't want to, you know, I, I, my road right now looks like a road in the worst part of Cleveland. It'll get better, I know, and then that's the plan. But people don't want to come and move to a community where the, where the roads aren't good. So to me, that's part of the overall plan. We talk about the various and sundry pieces and parts of recreation, that's part of the overall plan. You know, what, what does this community want and need? Not just in recreation, but in terms of the streets, et cetera. So as you think about that, and think about beginning to put some process in place, I strongly recommend that we also put in place some focus groups so that community members can participate in, in that process. Because we have, we need representation, I think, from our community that's old, like me, our community that's younger adults who are parenting small children, our community of color. We need representation from our, our entire community to input into a plan. So I strongly recommend focus groups, and I'm anxious to see what we can come up with. So, thank you.
Just, just to comment on that. Lee, as you know, as far as the putting some type of planning, I tasked council to do that. Jennifer, whoever, you know, you decide what committee or you want to put it together as a committee of the whole. We have, you mentioned infrastructure, there's an infrastructure committee, residents are welcome to come to that. Infrastructure committee and, and express their concerns or watch it live screen, no different than recreation, or even just come to the, the committee of the whole. But as, as far as putting some type of committee together, I, I think that, you know, I don't know how you want to approach it. Signing a few council members to it, or leave it as committees and approach it that way.
Mr. Mayor, if I can say, Councilman Spitznagel did forward to, I believe, all of council, the original master plan.
Correct.
And it took me three days and five trees to print it all out again. Unfortunately, I really hate doing that, but I did, so I have the hard copy literally sitting on my,
I know you mentioned you guys.
On my kitchen table, but it's.
I'm not sure that it needs to be five trees worth.
Right, well, that's what it originally was.
They have it electronically though.
Yeah, but it was, yeah, I liked the hard copy.
But it certainly makes sense to stop and say, where do we want to be? You know, here we are right now, taking care of today, and that's great, but where do we want to be? And, and if there are more funds coming in, glory hallelujah, how would we want to spend those funds in this community that would satisfy the greatest numbers of citizens in the community? That would be supportive of what we're trying to do, and supportive of our community as we move forward? Because if somebody, and I'm 76, so that's public knowledge. But as somebody my age, and I start to look around and I, and I see the community changing, it's like, okay, how do we pay attention to them? And I would like to see the demographics, I would like to understand what the demographics are now because they have changed.
Well, you know where we get those from. And we're waiting, hell, we get that from the census field.
Yeah.
It did sound that we're waiting for, I think that's, that's where we get them from. That's where, the village never did a study themselves, they get them from.
Right, right. It used to be published on a more regular basis.
They didn't do it for a few years, so.
Right.
So that's, we're, that just all took place as soon as we get all that.
Right, right.
So that's a great thing.
I do believe, I, Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor?
Yeah.
I do believe that I, in the grant that I wrote, I do have numbers in there, I don't have that grant with me.
Right.
That was from 2019, I believe. Those are the latest numbers that I was able to find, at various places, not just the US Census, like, like the census from, like schools, like what's the demographics of the, of the children from.
Who are our poor communities, right?
And things like that, and, and, you know, like the senior population, the middle aged population. But as I said, I believe it's from 2019.
Which is current enough, because it begins to show us. And, you know, if we look back to 2009, for example, I think we would see a fairly interesting difference in our community.
Oh, I agree.
And so if our last master plan is 20 years ago, that plan obviously took into consideration what the demographics of the community was at that time. And so as I'm, as I say, I think the demographics have changed, I don't know for a fact, but I think they've changed. And I think it's important for us as a community to be very thoughtful and planful around where our monies are going for the future. I'm not saying you're not thoughtful and planful on the day to day, because I think you are, but I'm talking about looking forward. Thank you.
Now, won't that be nice when we have those monies?
It's always nice to have more money. More money is better than less.
Right now, we haven't been able to look.
Exactly.
So far, have we just been trying to think so? It, it's so exciting. You just don't know how exciting it's going to be for our community.
But, you know, money doesn't fix everything.
I didn't, I didn't, that's what I'm saying.
And it feels good to have more because it feels like you can, but, you know, one of my.
All the issues you brought up, money-related?
No, the issues I brought up need to be thought about as a community, as most important to the community.
But to make those.
Happen.
If people want more, if we want to improve our recreation, want to improve our streets.
But if people have an opportunity.
Monies, I know that for anything.
Right. But if people have an opportunity to say, we have $100,000 in this community to allocate and we have a focus group that represents our community, that says, what would make sense in terms of how you allocate?
You also have a focus group with six people here that you will, five people that you elect every year with committees. I mean, that's fine about putting a committee. I'm going to tell you my focus and I, that's why I'm just so happy and with the support of council. The corner and the redevelopment of that corner is the most, you could do all the studies in the world right now. And any expert would tell you, the redevelopment of that corner is the most vital thing for Walton Hills. And it has, we have to stay focused on that. My position has to stay very focused on that. Mr. Jordan, the support of this council, get it right because we only have one chance at the largest parcel, one of the largest parcels in County County, if not the state, to redevelop.
Don't, don't disagree.
I'm telling not just you, Lee, I'm telling the residents that are listening, streaming. We, this is going to be one of the greatest years this village is going to see in years to come. It's going to be like when they put that plan up there. I'm trying, what I'm trying to say to everybody is, Lee, I, I agree with you. It's going to be great when we can, we, we, we can say, hey, we got some funds to spend and move us forward. I agree with, I have no problem with that. I'm just getting back to, just to say that we got something so exciting at that corner and it is going to be so great when we can say, guess what? What road's next? What road is next? Let's get back to our five-year plan. Leave those, those discussions that either took place in council or in a separate focus group, or guess what? Hey, let's get a new master plan. Man, you know, the cost is, that's, we need one. We can, we can afford it now.
Do, do we have a five-year plan for the roads?
Yes, we get one. We do it every five years. We get, we get an assessment every year from an engineer. We just haven't been able to execute. It's not because we don't have a plan. We just haven't been able to execute it because of the dollars. That's, you know, that's like been the hardest thing for all of us that sit up and people say, I can't believe that, I can't believe you don't, oh, that road's bad. You drive down it every day. I know it's bad. Why don't you want to fix it? Of course I want to. Why wouldn't I want to fix it? Do I want to? Can't afford it. That's, so I'm just, I'm just saying it's, and to your point, I, I know money doesn't fix things. Doesn't buy health, doesn't buy happiness. We all know that. But it, it does help with infrastructure issues. It, 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 it does help with staffing. It helps with personnel, helps with protection.
If only we were independents with all that extra tax money, right?
What's that?
If only we were independents with all their extra tax money.
Independence might not be the same independence. They're worried about, they have all these office buildings.
That's right. That's right. It's changing.
Residents, people are going to be working from home and that we're very fortunate. We're, we got that large thing, zone, mixed use, industrial, and that's probably, that's what's going in there. It's just, we're going to receive some, some payroll tax.
So.
So it's all good. Keep our taxes where they're.
I hear you that, you know, the, the future looks brighter with the board property being redeveloped.
Not just board, the other corners too.
The other corners.
NPK, Smith and Obie, um, the battery place, there's stuff going on there. But Smith and Obie, I think so three corners are going to happen this year. NPK's got a set of plans they submitted for an expansion to the planning commission. We're probably going to review this month. Nice expansion. Yeah.
I get that. And, and I get that the money coming in is fabulous, right? It helps free up your thinking. What I'm asking for is that.
It's a survival to our village.
What I'm asking for is that we begin a planning process that includes focus groups from community members who want to be a part of it that would allow us to look at a five-year plan for the village. Great that we have a roads plan, but a five-year plan and all for the overall village. And what do our residents really want in this village? Our residents, our population is changing. I think it's important for us to pay attention to it. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that and I'm going to, Lee, I'm going to task this council with it. If, if council feels, because I, how I feel about it, I think, you know, this council, um, has, has addressed the committees well. Have, there, there have been more committee meetings. My time, um, besides managing employees, which is the hardest part about any job, is really economic development and working and attracting these businesses. And now with that, this mayor's role is very important. Do they want to talk?
So are you saying that there's no need to create a plan? That the council, because you have the various committees, is already doing it?
I think, I think they're doing a good job, but what I'm saying, I'll be very blunt, that if this council agrees with Lee, then I'm tasking you guys to do it. I'm not going to be the lead on it. I don't want, I, I mean, I'll participate in stuff, Lee, but right now, I, I have my hands full with focusing on the redevelopment of, and our, our thing. And, and if anyone thinks that my role should be different right now, I, I would have exceptions and I would talk. Really, I'm in the right place right now.
Then Jennifer headed the overall planning. Jennifer, aren't you the head?
Well, she's, she's the president.
Yeah.
So that's all I'm saying. I'm just asking them to think I'm delegating that part.
That's great. That's great. That's great. What I would like to see is be is a vibrant, compassionate community. I'd like to see that and I think we have to actually think about that to become all of that.
Have I not just showed that the last 15 years?
Doesn't mean that we are not compassionate now, but I'm, I'm telling you my, here's my focus group, my view of this community for the future. You know, my favorite planning story is about New York City. In the early 1900s, the city fathers at that time, because there were no mothers who were on their various councils, uh, and there were no minorities either. The city fathers said, we have to work really hard to make sure that we hire more people to clean up the manure from all the horses that were on the streets. And cars started to, and they were completely unready. Completely unready. They were busy cleaning up poop. And what they really needed to do was think about how do we, they, they were beginning to see cars, but they didn't have any attention paid to that. And how is that going to change our future? Thank you.
And you just said just what I was saying. My, what I'm saying to you, we have the largest project, we're going to have, starting soon, one of the largest projects in County County, let alone the state. And if that isn't planning, what happens there?
It's not bigger than Intel, is it?
If that, if, if that, what happens there, there is so much planning just to take down that building and start constructing other buildings. It, it's just, it's unbelievable. It's such a great thing. We have problems, but I'll have to give you just, and this council shared it. This is, this is a great thing. When you're a small community and something so large like this happens, you have problems because internally, we can't handle a lot of that. So you have to get third parties involved. But you know what they call these problems? Good problems. They're good problems. But what you're saying is the redevelopment of that is going to affect everything. And no different than going from horses to cars. We're going to go from a community who has been just trying to survive with our existing infrastructure, our existing businesses, maintaining your existing businesses. See, people all talk about economic, maintaining your businesses in 2022 is as hard as attracting new ones. Okay? It's just as hard because right now, while you're trying to maintain an NPK, there's somebody knocking on NPK's door saying, hey, you don't need to add it 60,000 square feet. We got a building right over here in the next community. Okay? All right. We'll sell it to you for less than what you're going to pay to redevelop it. And not only that, it's even closer to this. Okay? And years ago, a community would say, oh, we're not going to do that to this. Communities are competing against each other. Economic development right now is the most important thing for every community in the entire country.
It depends on what, it depends on what the community wants.
Well, everybody wants everything. I want us to have everything.
No. It depends on what the community wants. And I've heard you say over and over again that we are a country rule community.
Right.
Country home community, I think.
We're a country home district.
Yeah. Maybe people don't want to be a country home district. So what I'm saying is I think it's time to, yes, continue economic development. It's very important. But I think it's time to say to our changing community, what do we think we ought to be? I don't think I'm asking for anything that is completely off the wall, but maybe I am.
No, 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 you're not. You're asking, it's, what I'm saying is if your economic development is good and your revenue stream flow is good, you're a vibrant, a vibrant, like you have, your, your community is vibrant. Then when you have that committee and you say, what do you want to do? Everything's there. Okay, do you want sidewalk? No, we don't want them. Okay. You want a new swing set? Yeah, we want a new swing set. Oh, guess what? We can afford that. Instead of saying, oh, we want a new swing set. Well, you can't have it. What do you mean you can't have it? We, we're, we're just barely in the black. We would like to fix our roads. We want better markings. Oh, we can do that. We can afford to do it. Ah, we can't do it. We don't have the money. So everything you're saying is exactly true. I'm just saying to get to that point, whether you offer your residents, they want it or they don't want it, it's still going to take money to fund it.
I'm not disagreeing with you. What I am asking for is a, a view that says, what is, what is the community, our community wants to be?
Like the recreation survey. Residents wanted that.
Survey, survey. I'm talking focus groups, some kind of input from the residents that say, what do we want to be today?
Well, if the focus group would have to get a survey or, or invite residents.
Something.
Yeah. I'm, I'm on the same page with you.
I think we're maybe in the same book. We might not be on the same page.
What I'm trying to say is we are living in the greatest time in this village right now. Except when the Ford plant was initially open and things were, we, we have been, I know as a resident, when that Ford plant closed in 2015 and our house left a couple of years later, there's concern. We all have a concern. So what happened? We all rolled up our sleeves and we said, guess what? We love it here so much. I'm willing to pay for my, my sewer. I'm going to pay for my rubbish removal, okay? Because I love Walton Hills so much. I'm going to pay to keep the same level of service, the same country home district for the community I love. And now what I'm saying is our efforts as a village have paid off. We hung in there tight. We've been balancing the budget. And now we have the greatest opportunity that's going to happen. And maybe we can even take more of that load off the residents, put the load back on the building. That's a great thing. Those things you're talking about are all going to fall in place.
I don't think it falls in place. I think you have to be planful. And I'm very happy to volunteer to participate in any way. And I think, Don, you've been, Mayor Don, you've been planful with Tom Jordan around economic development. I think you have to be planful to get ready to not be scooping up manure, but to be driving on streets. I think you have to be planful. And I think that we're doing a great job taking care of today. And you and Tom and others have been planful about economic development. But it's time for us to say, okay, there was a plan 20 years ago. Let's take a look at where we are now and where we want to be and, and what our population is and what our population wants. That's all I'm asking for.
Oh, no, I agree with you.
And I volunteer.
The, the only difference, I think, me and you and I'll get back to it, and I don't mind talking about this because I was part of the planning commission. So I know how a planning commission works. I spent, what did we spend? 18 months on it?
You had a good year.
Okay. If you have a county planning commission, consider it one of the better planning commission, you know, uh, groups you can hire. There's third parties and stuff. There was a lot of effort and a lot of, lot to do with it, okay? And residents were part of that, um, committee along with business owners, okay? And along with council members. So you had a mix of elected officials, residents and business owners. So you had a mix of everybody in the community. But it was, it was driven and organized by a professional planner.
Yep.
And we paid for that.
Yep.
Okay? So, um, I, I think it's great and I'm, I'm sure this council will, will do a great job to start putting something together in that. But when it comes time to put another master plan together, I hope that maybe we can also, um, have a professional planner or even be part of it.
Sounds like we're going to have the money to do that. So let's do it.
I'm done. You just answered my question.
Yeah.
That was just, that was just exactly where I was going.
Mr. Mayor Goldgraff.
But it's, I want you to know, Lee, it's, it's all great. It's, it's a great thing. Just telling you. I, I look at people, I, I, the last, especially the last three months, four months.
Do it.
With the recreation and, and different things. I just see a lot of those issues going away because a lot of those issues aren't because this person doesn't want or this person wants it or that. It's because we all want it, but we just can't afford it right now. So those are really, really important.
Mayor Goldgraff?
Yes.
If, if I may, uh, thank you, Ms. Nielsen, for your, uh, input tonight. Very valuable to us as council and to Mayor and for the rest of council. I'm looking forward to an opportunity to plan, uh, comprehensively for the future. And yes, everything, everything has a cost. There's a, everything has a cost. There are some things that can be done with minimal cost. Uh, for instance, the recreation committees, uh, have already done some, uh, phenomenal work this year in getting, uh, beginning to get some input from our community as it relates to rec, uh, recreational opportunities. And of course, you know, I don't, Chairman Spitznagel, I'm not sure what's next as it relates to how, how do we begin to sort through the, you know, I mean, if you can take the survey results and that is what it is, but is that the end-all, be-all? Or do you go to the next step with a focus group kind of thing? So I'm excited, uh, that, you know, we have residents that recognize and want to be included and have a part of shaping, uh, what Walton Hills is and looks like in, into the future. And of course, as we began, uh, perhaps as, as early as next week, when we began to take a look at where we are financially for 2022, uh, which also, in, in my opinion, is also sets the tone for setting up a budget for 2023. Individual, individual committees on council can do so much. But as a mayor, as you've already expressed, uh, real planning actually takes, will, will require some additional resources. And, and that's a conversation, I think, has to be on the table when we are looking at our 2023 budget. Yeah, we know things are happening, uh, but, but nothing happens without a plan and without, uh, and the big one is the budget plan. So, uh, uh, thank you, Ms. Nielsen. And I think we just, we just have to take a look at, take a look at how, how do we, how do we incorporate our, our community's, um, passion to be included, uh, in the future of Walton Hills. And then of course, you know, how do we pay for, pay for what we need to do? I'm, I'm excited.
Thank you, Wilson.
It's, it's exciting. We're going to be living great times.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, that master plan, if you read the master plan, if you have it, if you don't, we can get it to you in electronic form, um, that master plan does go into, um, demographics at the time, of course, uh, at the time, but if you read it, it, it doesn't give suggestions, uh, I shouldn't say it doesn't give, but in totality, it gives suggestions on, uh, improving various parts of the village based on, uh, their recommendations of civic improvements, whether that would be the park, or that would be certain roads, or that would be the buildings. Uh, their recommendations weren't necessarily, and for the most part, were not based on demographics or what, what people, uh, you know, uh, groups of people wanted. Now, not that that isn't valuable, because I, I agree, uh, with, uh, Mrs. Nielsen wholeheartedly as we move along with this process. And, uh, I had already talked, talked to a, a, another resident months ago about certain focus groups for, for certain things, and I think that's very valuable. So that's very well taken. Um, but that master plan didn't say, you should improve this because this is how people want, want it, or you should improve this because people over here want this. It was based on a, um, municipal planning perspective, um, and not really based on the demographics of the village. Would you agree with that?
It, you know, what changes too is what people want. Is a library today the same as it was even eight years ago? Anybody goes to a library today, if you haven't been to the library recently, you'd say, oh my God, it's not the library I remember. It's so different. And when the master plan was put together, it was, it was a big focus on a recreation center. Recreation centers were so popular at that time, different types of thing. Now, computer rooms, gaming things, it's, it's so different. It would be, it would definitely, it would be definitely different. As you spoke, Lee, things change. You're right, Brian. It's also what's, what, what is out there too, you know? What people are looking for too. It was a lot to it. And that was my point, a person that does that brings that all together. Because it's good to meet, but you also need, and, and Lee, you made that point, you need, you need that, you do need that, uh, expertise to bring all that information together, uh, and, and put it together, what's important, what, what should be focused on first, what, you know, what should be at that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer.
And I just want to add that there was only about a third of us, I believe, that survived the end of that master plan committee meeting, because it was so incredibly thorough and took so long. Um, but I forgot about the demographics being in there, because I did get, uh, earlier this year, and it's all written out by hand, but from worldpopulationreview.com for the population for Walton Hills for 2021. Um, and just some quick numbers, median age in the village right now is 58. There is 605 residents, 65 and older. Um, 255 residents as of last year that were aged 19 and younger. So the, the numbers are changing, you know? I believe the demographics used to be an older age, you know, median age was older. So, but I did put that together to start looking at things like that.
Yeah, we used to be second to Beachwood for seniors. Because Beachwood had the largest senior population in Walton Hills, and we're second to, I mean, percentage wise.
Yeah, those are some interesting numbers, because, you know, when I, when, uh, Mrs. Weeden and I moved into the village, I thought the median age then was closer to, it was a little younger than that, actually. And I'm interested to see the actual, actual census data and, and then this continual update. Uh, we see, we see what's happening here. We see, um, you know, one resident either sell their house or, or expire and the family sells the house, and then two or three people, a whole family of younger people move in. So that median age has to, at some point, should change.
Yeah, we, like Lee, you expressed your neighborhood. Our neighborhood, Ray, is, we've seen, I've seen it change, you know, in a good way, seeing some younger families and some kids. Yes.
Um, uh, if I may, uh, speak about the, the committee meetings we had last week. Uh, we did have an information committee meeting, uh, last week. And, uh, Mr. Nielsen and Ms. Allen was there, they're part of the committee, along with myself, um, we talked about the website and, uh, what things we had wanted to accomplish last year, the things out of that that were done, and the things that still need to be done, or some things were revised, and, uh, we want to revise it even further to, uh, make it easier for people, the people and businesses to use the website. Uh, we are going to be looking into, right now, the county administers our website and, uh, just to do our research and the costs and things like that to see, uh, if there are any other, uh, local, uh, businesses that we can, um, go with to host our website, uh, that would give us more physical control over the layout of the website and to be able to change information, uh, basically on the fly. Um, so we'll be looking at that. Maybe it'll, that'll pan out, maybe it won't, maybe the county will be the best, uh, best deal for us, but we're going to be looking into that. And, um, uh, so that's what that focused on. The recreation committee, uh, I did have a report, uh, from Natalie Buck. We did have 50, uh, children from Parker Program. And, uh, again, as you stated before, we did hire one person that's a lead. That person, uh, is a teacher, I believe from Cleveland, Cleveland Public Schools, three years' experience there. Um, and they are interviewing other people, uh, for those positions also. Also, uh, let's see, along with, uh, that, we did open the, uh, restrooms were open at the park this weekend. The mayor took care of that. And, uh, again, we talked about the Lake, uh, with the Lake, uh, the Lake Club contract, and currently that's $20,000. They did not want to, um, uh, deviate from that. They had their, uh, budget worked out, although I would have liked specific numbers from the Lake, uh, which we did not get from that, that meeting. I would have liked them to present specific numbers as to what they had, what they were going to spend, what they were going to in, income, and, uh, what they were projected to end up with this year. Um, we all know they do a tremendous amount of work down there. That's not the issue. Uh, the issue was, and the question was, that $20,000 falls within our recreation budget, um, that we purchase. So as we look at that, uh, within our recreation budget, um, and considering the other things we want to do as far as, uh, how the survey turned out, oh, I did discuss the survey also. And, uh, a lot of people want a basketball court, uh, so we were going over, uh, markings and things like that, and, uh, the cost of all that stuff, whether we just want to mark or we just, or we want to paint. And that cost varies from anywhere from $4,000 to $30,000. Um, and again, in planning, we had the money. Um, so, uh, my thoughts on, uh, we still have to look at, at some numbers, but I would like to have something done based on the survey for the summer. Uh, I'd like to come to a, whether we have to have another meeting, a recommending, to make a recommendation to council, uh, towards the end of this month, so, uh, we can, uh, start to do something. Uh, and next week's meeting with Angela hopefully will be, uh, more enlightening as far as where we are right now with, with certain items in the budget. Um, Ms. Allen asked last week about a $15,000 buying item, um, whether we needed that money, because last year we actually spent $16,000. And the question was, um, not where is that money? The question was, uh, can we?
Do we really anticipate?
Yeah, can we think about spending less since we spent a little bit more last year? Did we fix up and do the buildings and land more last year than, uh, and we can anticipate a little less this year now? Um, Angela did write back and, and she said that, uh, based on her conversations and things like that, that she was still planning on that money. Um, so we'll have to look elsewhere to see if we can, uh, come up with something. Uh, I would like to, based on the focus group of the survey, I'm going to call that a focus group. Um, and, uh, as for next year, um, I would suggest that as we discuss about the Lake Club contract, we do that earlier. Uh, so if we end up taking, uh, funds from there, uh, for recreational opportunities for the residents, uh, based on what the residents want, um, then they'll have that ability to plan for that. And we'll have to see if the Parkers would still go there or, or, or what. I don't, I wouldn't have any idea what that's going to look like or, or if it's going to change. I'm just, uh, throwing it out there, uh, based on their comments that, that it was too late in the year for them to, uh, plan. So I think it would be, uh, beneficial for everybody if everybody knew the plan, uh, towards the end of this year, what we were going to do. Uh, so that's, that's the end of my remarks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Spitznagle, regarding our website, do you remember when Jean Kainsinger put the, were you aware that she sent, uh, like a link that was to be to our website about all that historical information she had?
No.
You know, Katie was still fiscal officer, and, um, I was reviewing that, and I don't know what happened to that. And of course, her, uh, she stopped acquiring information. Mrs. Money can maybe answer. You don't know anything about that? They took all those pictures, uh, when Mr. Hurst was still the mayor, and they scanned everything, and it was supposed to be able to be accessed by anyone online to learn about our history.
You can get it. You can get it online. Get it on.
I don't think we know where it is online. That's what I'm saying.
If you, if, and you're, we'll have to find out about that link, is if we can put that back on.
It's a link, and I, it was a while ago, and I don't.
I'm wondering if it's at the Historical Resource Center in Bedford on their web.
It should be. It should have, it was, it was to be on our website, but to be quite honest with you, I don't think Mrs. Kainsinger was very pleased with how it was scanned, and she was actually quite angry about it, and I thought it looked great, and I didn't understand that. Um, but I know Katie knew something about it, so maybe I'll ask Angela or try and get ahold of Katie or something.
Yeah.
But whether or not, I think any, any layman, any villager, anyone interested in the history of this, not only the village, but the area in general, would find it fascinating. I mean, she might not have had it exactly the way she liked it because she was such a perfectionist, but I thought it was very well, well thought out and went, went well, the scanning went well. Um, I remember when that was done. I, uh, I think you, you might have been involved, but, um, they had people there, but taking all the books that she had collected, all that information over all the years, um, I have to look into that. I'm sorry, I didn't want to get off track, but it just, it's, it's something that anybody would be interested in, and I think they had it where, like, um, you can go on the Encyclopedia of Cleveland, if you Google that, that's put together by Case Western Reserve, you can put a doctor, a famous doctor's name in there from Cleveland, his name, his name will come up and it'll give you the history of where he practiced, where he was from. I can't imagine the research that went into that, but, um, I think it, this, this link was supposed to be somewhat interactive, that if you put, um, General Conley in, that you would get all the information about General Conley or, um, all the other old mayors or whatever, everything. So I'll, I'll see what I can find out, because I was thinking about that when you were talking about being more interactive, and I thought, what happened to that?
It's there. It's called Up and Walton Hills.
It is?
No, if you, if you, if you just take your phone and you Google, I think what we're missing is with, is.
Is it not on the website? It's on by itself or something?
I, because, I'll tell you why, I, um, when you look something up sometimes, it pops up, you know, and it's fun, you look and you see pictures. I see pictures of like all the events, and see, I'm not getting no service here, um, in here.
Big surprise.
Um, you see your kids and all that. So it's there.
Okay.
It's, it's out there.
All right. I'll just have to find it.
How to access it.
Yeah.
You know, what happened many years ago, I think would happen, maybe, when.
Up and Walton Hills?
Yeah, it's called Up and, Up and Walton Hills, I think it is. Yeah, it's, it's all there.
Well, I just wondered where, how do you access, where is it?
What happened? I, I don't know.
It's in the, yeah.
Because I know there, that, you know, it wasn't a village thing, it was the Historical Society and then something the county couldn't do it. I don't think it was because it was missed. At one time, we hosted our own website, we had a person that did our own website, okay? And then we went to the county site and that, them hosting it changed everything. So I think it was, I don't think it was like it was missed, left, I don't think they could get it on there.
Oh.
I don't remember, but it was something like that. We had our own when we, um, we brought in our first, we brought in the first website, we had a, what do you call it, a web manager at that time.
Well, maybe we can just hit the link on, like we did.
Well, that's.
And that might, maybe what they couldn't do then, they could do now, so.
That's what I meant, just the link.
Yep. Yep. Good, good thought. Good idea. Let's see what we can do with that. But it's out there, because I have looked at, like, once you get on it, you can keep going, they got all these pages.
Oh, yes, that's exactly what it is.
There's pages of it. It's the, it's the owl.
Yeah.
It's articles, it's pictures. A lot of it is the owl. It's the potpourri and stuff, which is really nice. You can go back, they have all the old stuff, you know? I've seen all my kids when they were little and all the events and, you know, I, I had hair then at that time. Josephine, you had something to say?
Yeah.
You can, you can right now. I, I, unless anybody on me, you can go back, go ahead, you have something.
My concern is.
You want to get the mic?
Oh, yes. Josephine Wardle, 178, in Green Room. Um, let me get my voice. I can't believe that our governor signed House Bill 172 to allow fireworks, uh, to be, what's the matter? Oh, you can't hear me? It's amazing, I can't hear any of you either.
Even me?
No, you're a little different. Um, in your enthusiasm about redeveloping Ford's property, I hope you'd consider putting in a good PA system here so we could hear you, even out in the hallways.
Spend more money.
But unfortunately, I don't know if that's on the top of your list. As enthusiastic as you are about the redevelopment of Ford, just take into consideration how long it's taken Twinsburg with the Chrysler plant. So hopefully we all live long enough to see. So hopefully, we all live long enough to see all these improvements in the village. But my main concern is.
You're gonna see something, starting this year, Josephine Wardle?
I know, but it's gonna take a long time. I worked at Ford for 40 years, and it's very sad seeing the place being torn down.
Oh, I know, if those walls could talk, huh?
Hell, I mean.
They supported a lot of people.
Okay, but my concern is the House Bill 172. I know it gives the communities the option to completely ban, ban it, and I wish we'd consider that. You have to look around this community and see how heavily wooded we are. A lot of, majority of, I'd say a good percentage of the trees are dying. We don't need the chance, take the chance of having people who are not familiar with the dangerous commodity is fireworks, and many people are irresponsible to cause fires in this community. Let's look back at California, Paradise, California, I don't think they even rebuild that community. I used to have land in Arizona, in Coquenito County. Arizona is burning. We've been very fortunate in this area not to be affected by hurricanes, tornadoes, devastation. So let's not cause any problems, and let's seriously consider a complete ban on these fireworks. Let's not forget the little girl, and I believe it was Independence who was killed by fireworks, set off by professional. And I'm not sure what year it was, but it was quite a while ago, but still was very devastating. I don't see any reason why we have to shoot them off in this community, or any other small area by individuals, where you can go to many cities and see fireworks and enjoy them, which are set off by professional people. I remember how it was, I think back in, uh, in 2020, when they were being shot off all over the community. I mean, down the street from me, around me, I mean, they were going way up in the air. And, uh, my main concern is risking the lives of people, and maybe causing damages, fires. So there is an option in the bill to completely ban it. I know we may need more police on the roads during those days, but I cannot understand why our governor would sign this bill and allow all these days to people to, uh, shut, set off fireworks. So I don't want to hold you up, because it is late, but we can discuss it further, and I wish we'd consider the risk of the people in banning it. Thank you.
Thank you. With that said, you talk about other communities. I'd like to see, it'd be great if we could have our community day, again, one of the things we cut out due to finances. What a great event, our residents miss that. If I get anything, every year, the residents say to me, Mayor, are we gonna have Community Day? Why aren't we having, you know? And, and it's strictly a budgetary thing. And with that Community Day, the residents were able to say to their children, well, you know, we'll have fireworks that day, we have a great display, it's not the Fourth of July, it's a different day. So that's something to think about, too. You know, we banned the fireworks like we have, but it'd be nice if we can bring back Community Day, or at least a similar fireworks day, where maybe we don't spend as much, depending on where we're at for next year. But just wanted to throw that out there. Any other residents or council have any other, other comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer.
Talking about the committee, we were gonna try to get the survey results posted to the website.
Yeah.
Do you know if Lisa's had a chance to even attempt that yet or not?
No, not yet.
And I believe the next few days, she'll be at the building department, so. Also, about our website, for what it's worth, if there are any residents that would like to get in contact with me to try to advise about setting up our own webpage, because we are just so bound by using the county. If, if there's anybody out there that knows somebody that might be willing to say, hey, go in this direction, I'm not asking them to sit down and develop our whole website, but give me a direction to go in with it, you know, at least. So that, that's my plea to them about that. And the other business that I have, Mr. Mayor, is I received a notice from First Energy and Cleveland Electric Illuminating, they're gonna start doing right-of-way clearing of trees down Alexander Road, so just people are aware. Of course, they hate it when they do that, they're pushing the trees, but. And the last.
And they will post something on you, a door knock if they're required.
I got it in the mail just today, so. And just one side note, I would just like everybody to know that next week, actually starting Saturday, the 14th, through Sunday, the 22nd, is National EMS Week.
Mr. Mayor?
She wants another gift.
I didn't get one for her.
I didn't get nothing for my birthday.
I have a more important birthday I had to handle that day.
I am, I understand.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I looked up the, uh, Up in Walton Hills, and it comes right up on, on Google. Up in Walton Hills, it comes right up.
Well, they put it somewhere.
It's all there, it's the greatest stuff, you can see all these things.
Starting in 1936.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's Up in Walton Hills.
I moved in the next year.
It feels like it does.
What a, what a great job, uh, historical committee you guys have done, and, and Mrs. Kaysinger, it's just, I mean, when you go and see all that information, it's just wonderful. It's, it's all there, so I think what we can do is, should we leave that link back on there somehow? If we can do that. And with that said, you know, put something in the journal, a little thing that, you know, you can find that information, so. Yeah. I'll put that, um.
Yeah, I just typed in Up, Up in Walton Hills.
Yeah, see, I couldn't get up.
Went right to it.
Yeah, it comes right to it. Just put in the dates and.
A lot of names are familiar, a lot of old names in there.
The only other thing, I, I did pass out with the Memorial Day, we got the invitation today. He's got the letter dated the 5th, but he put it in my mailbox, I haven't gotten anything electronically. So I make copies for everybody, you know, if you want to walk, or whatever, um, Memorial Day. We will have our service here, one of our residents will give a presentation. I think people will enjoy and, and, and stuff, and then we will have the Bedford one, if anybody wants to go. I know I'm, I'm gonna go, uh, if anybody else wants to join, it's, it's a great, a lot of us have done it in the past and walked, or, and it's a nice, nice event to have there. It's considered one of the nicest Memorial Day services actually in the state. It's not a parade, there's not candy passed out, it's a very solemn, uh, recognition of our veterans who gave the ultimate sacrifice, so.
Very respectful.
Yes, it's really, uh, everybody really should go to that Bedford service, it's really, it's really touching.
It is, I always.
Ours is nice, too, I won't say ours. Ours is a nice preview, and you go from ours to theirs, and it's really, uh, really a nice, a nice thing. That's all I have, does anybody else have anything, other, other business? Any, any residents that are here? Any council, any other members, or?
Nope.
Okay, then I'd like to ask for a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for a motion for adjournment for the committee of the whole meeting for May 10th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mary Brenner Miller. Vote on the motion. Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Mary Brenner?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagel?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, meeting adjourned at 8:59. Thank you, everybody, enjoy the wonderful week, enjoy the warm weather. Good. Yeah, I, I, every year, well, we, that's, we didn't do too bad, we had about 30, 35, but a couple of years ago, we had more, you know, it was, and then we had the pandemic, but, thank you. I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was really nice, and, um, our country really needs it, and so does the world, huh? He is. And Eric, Eric from, he gave a nice, he's just a little shorter. Could you imagine if he had?